I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And second it, all those in favor. Any opposed? We'll start with board dialogue. And first of all, I'd like to welcome Mr. Kerry Noble and Ms. Joan Sullivan. Good to see you here this evening. They'll be taking over in April. And we appreciate their service. On the agenda, we have the possibility of doing some serious recycling. And that makes me really happy. And so I just wanted to say thank you. And please remember, recycle. Okay. Communications from the audience. Heartland Hero, Dr. Kraus.
This evening, I have the privilege of announcing Heartland Hero for the month of February. Steve Berry, can I have you come forward? It's a little maze to get up here. Steve has worked in the district for 19 years, correct?
Yep.
All right. Steve currently teaches in a 4th grade classroom at Washington Franklin. As past president of CTA, Steve partnered with community members to initiate the backpack program for our students. The backpack program is one which several of our students count on during the long weekends, holiday breaks, or evenings at home when food is needed. Steve has been a huge contributor to the backpack program. He's coordinated it for the past two years with Meadow Heights Church to send home backpacks over Christmas break. This year, Steve, along with two parents, have tried to expand the program to last the entire school year. He works several hours a week filling backpacks and training others to fill the backpacks so that the students may have food every weekend. He has coordinated supplies that have been donated and enlisted business sponsors from the community. He was instrumental in developing the criteria for the backpack program and has been very quick to provide information and assistance to those in need. Steve is a very kind, caring teacher who puts his students first. He is always willing to help students in need, even if it's just to serve as a mentor. Steve is a colleague that teachers feel they can talk to. He's a great role model for staff and for students. We would like to present you with Heartland Hero for this month.
Thank you very much. I don't deserve this. You know, when we sent home, what, about 150 at Christmas, and I thought, phew, boy, that's over with. But then in January, we sent home about 175. And this month, we're going to top 200. And we get notes from little kids, and they're not really sure where they come from, but they say, hey, if you see those backpack people, tell them thanks, we really need their food. So it kind of makes you realize how important it is. I want to share this award with some community members, Kerry, of course, and Melissa, and Paul Barnes, who helped through the Christmas, and Kerry, and Melissa's been on my heels every day since, keeping me busy, and it's just really rewarding. So thank you, everybody, so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That was my first.
Congratulations, Steve. How about featured teacher?
I will do feature teacher. Featured teacher for the month of February. This month, we are honoring a staff member who's been in the district since 1996. He's taught physical education and health courses to students in almost every building in the district. Whether through summer school or regular session, he makes physical education a fun priority in the lives of students. He challenges students of all abilities to be the very best that they can be and perform at the highest levels that they aspire to achieve. Besides the multiple coaching ties he has to the school district, he also connects with the community in supportive leadership roles. His encouragement of students to participate in extracurricular fashion leads many to a path of self-advocacy, self-improvement, and good character. It does not matter the physical needs of the student. This teacher adapts the curriculum in his room, or gym, to the needs of the individual learner. When faced with a student who may have a physical disability or need, he looks for the solution in the situation. If he is unclear, he researches, talks to staff, and gets to know the child until he figures out how to make the best situation for the student in a supportive manner. Students recognize his warmth in welcoming them to class, and they look forward to being a part of the whole class activity. Students love to say his name, give a high five, or attempt to get him out while participating in the game. He always includes students without separation, no matter how unique or severe the needs may be of the student. Our featured teacher for special services is Rusty Sansagro.
A little shocked at Rusty because he wasn't expecting this, so...
No, I thought I was coming for my daughter.
You're not Taylor, I'm Wayne, huh? I will say that Rusty was overwhelmingly with the special services staff members, basically saying that the way that he stepped forward to take care of all kids was very appreciative.
Thank you very much. I really don't know what to say. I do appreciate all the kids. I had a teacher when I was in 8th grade, I guess, Ms. Huff. I wasn't always the best student. She did not let me, she didn't let me fail. She pushed me beyond my expectations of myself. So that's kind of what I do, no matter what kid it is. Try to do the best and get the best out of each and every kid. So I really appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, how about featured staff member?
Okay. This featured staff member is a staff member who has worked for the district since 1999. This featured staff member is a special services staff member who has taken care of countless medical emergencies, given communication skills to those who have few, and has been a cornerstone to all who came, come through her classroom. She is a partner in educating students. She's a go-getter who does not wait for anyone to ask her to do anything. She jumps in feet-first to get the best system up and running for the students. She volunteers for district committee representation and dedicates her time to such events. She continues to support former students by always being available for transitioning students to discuss issues and problem-solving, baseline discussions or observation, and modeling for the best way to address a new situation. She is at school every morning before 7:00 a.m., ready to start the day. Here's a clue, she's early to rise, baking cookies for the students to sell. She takes critical charge of the middle school café, a student-run café in the library with Mrs. Hensley. She teaches students valuable work skills, all the while by providing supportive initiative of self-confidence and advocacy skills. She's a staple at the middle school with students, classroom teachers, and all staff. Sherri Bronkhoff.
You really gave her a review. I apologize. I know you, and Sherri does not like recognition of any type, so she just jumps in there, and literally, when I said she jumps in feet-first, she does. Don't tell her to do anything, she's got it going on.
Thank you very much, and that's all I got to say. I'm not much on words and stuff, but very appreciative and stuff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Ashley, can we have an FFA student here this evening?
Well, I'd like to introduce Alex Burkell. She's going to tell you about a unique opportunity that she had this past January. Before she gets to talk, I actually kind of wrote up, kind of, I guess, maybe a little bit about her and what she's done in our FFA chapter. She's been really, really active ever since she was a freshman, so time and time again, she's shown true leadership within our chapter. She's currently serving as our chapter president and was vice president her junior year. As a sophomore, she was selected to attend the Missouri Agribusiness Academy. This is a very prestigious honor in which only 30 sophomores from across the state of Missouri are selected to attend. Also, as a sophomore, she participated in the Missouri Farm Bureau Public Speaking Contest in which she placed 3rd at the state competition. As a junior, she received her state FFA degree. The state of Missouri only allows 3% of their members to earn this degree, so to receive it as a junior really showed her dedication to the FFA. And this year, as a senior, her proficiency award was selected to represent our area on the state level, and she'll be recognized on the stage at state convention in April. She's attended FFA camp, Washington Leadership Conference, and national convention, and she's been on a career development event each year. Each year, she outdoes herself, and she's been a top-three fruit seller all four years of high school, and she's organized many of our chapter activities, and she really has the ability to motivate our students to join in the planning as well. She's really been a role model to the members of our chapter, and she's going to graduate this year, so we'll really miss her leadership. So now she's going to tell us about, or tell you guys about, her opportunity she had this past January.
Thank you. Well, in January, this wasn't actually an FFA event, but when I was in 8th grade, I was selected by my teachers to be nominated to go to a state leadership conference. And all the alumni from those conferences are invited every four years to attend the Presidential Inaugural Conference, and I was one of those. And I was invited last summer, and I had to book my spot then. And so in January, I went from the 19th to the 23rd, and I was the only person from this area. I flew with A.J. Gons from St. Jen, who's a freshman, which I didn't know him before, but he was the only person from anywhere near here. So there was 1,900 high school students there, and I didn't know anybody. But the first night, we were all thrown together, and we broke up into groups of 50 who we stayed with all week, and even at the end of the week, I didn't know all the kids in my group, there were so many people there. But we got to listen to a bunch of different speakers. The first night, we got to listen to the Capitol Steps, which is a political satire, if you know them. And then the second day, we listened to Dr. Condoleezza Rice talk about her experiences with the presidency, which was really neat, and some of the scholars got to ask her questions afterwards, so we got to know a little more about her. And that night, we watched All the President's Men, which I also watched at school in American History, and George Clooney, which is, well, not, it wasn't George Clooney, it was his dad, actually, sorry. And him and Bob Woodward, who was the journalist that covered Watergate, they talked about the movie afterwards, and some of the scholars got to ask them questions, which was really cool, and I liked that I already knew from school what all that was about, so it was really neat to get to hear firsthand what had happened with that. And then on the third day, we got to go to the inauguration. We were split up into groups of about five kids, and we went to the National Air and Space Museum Smithsonian. And we had to leave our hotel at 4 o'clock in the morning so that we could get through traffic, which a drive that usually takes about 30 minutes took us over two hours because traffic was so bad. But it was really neat, and we went out on the National Mall, and we got to actually watch the inauguration. In my group, we managed to weasel our way as far forward as the public could go, so it was a really neat experience to get to see that. And that night, we had a private concert at our hotel with All-Star Weekend, which I have no idea who those people are. But everybody thought it was awesome, and it was really fun. We got to talk to all the other students and myself and the kids that I was hanging out with. We had a little political conversation, which was, what this is mostly about, we talked about politics, learned a lot about the political process, which was really neat, I enjoyed it. And the last day, Klaus Nobel, which is the founder of the National Society of High School Scholars, spoke to us, which I'm a member of that, and about a tenth of the students there were, which was cool. And then General Wesley Clark talks to us, and we had a gala at the National Air and Space Museum that night. But it was a really neat experience, and not many people got to go, and I'm really glad of all the FFA activities that I've been to and the leadership things I've done in the local and state levels, so that I wasn't scared to get in with all these kids from big schools. And there was really no one from this general area of the country. Most of the kids are from, like, New York or Georgia, there was a lot of kids from those areas. But it was really neat to be able to talk to all of them and talk about issues in this area and issues in agriculture that kids from big cities really don't understand or hear about, and so it was really neat. Had a great time.
Thank you for representing us so well. I'm sure you showed them we have a lot of class. I'm sure you did, I'm sure of it. Okay, do we have a CTA report?
Yes.
Okay, and did everybody get the letters on, your emails? So, Dr. Thomas?
Yes. Last night was Farmington Night at Mineral Area College, and I just want to commend our band, our Nightline, and our Winter Guard, who performed and did a marvelous job. It was really nice to have our students there, and also to see how well our students do compared to collegiate-level activities. They were absolutely wonderful. Want to send just another note of respect out to Marie Gibbs, who celebrated her 90th birthday last week and is still working for the district. That would be 9-oh, 90. And still working and has a great attitude and really keeps us on our toes. And the last thing is that Stacy Williams and I attended a character meeting today at Ringham's Park, and we talked a lot about how a lot of you probably wish you'd been there, but too bad we were there. But I'm teasing, they were, had, the general, what was his COE?
I knew you were going to ask me, and I totally...
He oversees a lot of the recruitment efforts and talked about the relationship between character and how they balance it with their selections and their draft choices, so it was really nice.
Kevin Demoff.
Pardon me?
Demoff.
Demoff of the...
Yes, that's who it was.
Front of yours? No, you know.
No, I'm just full of worthless information.
It's a dirty job, but someone's got to do it. Okay. Mr. Pharaoh isn't here this evening, but Sarah's going to be at his stead and give us all information about instructional technology.
It's my pleasure. I wanted to catch you all up with where we're moving as far as integrating students into a more technology-rich environment. And we have a committee that's going to meet this Thursday, which is vertically aligned, which means we have business teachers from the high school all the way down to one of our librarians who's working with one of our 2nd grade groups. So we're going to be talking about what do we do next year and the following years, so we have 4th graders ready to sit down and in one setting be able to type a response on the national, which will be our state test as well. We're also looking at when do we introduce things like spreadsheets and some of the computer applications. When we talk about technology, we probably don't even have an idea of what our kids are going to need to be able to do in about 10 years. So that's where we're going this weekend. I'm sure you'll hear a little bit more about staffing and some other issues as soon as that committee gets their direction and begins to set those plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we have a report from Mr. John Kraus this evening. We've all become hyper-aware of school safety, considering some of the things that have happened lately, so he's here to give us an update.
Okay, I'm just going to kind of go through and talk about some of the things that we've done this year as a district, kind of some accomplishments and an overview. First thing that we did this year was we got the Incident Command Training for our administrators and several of the secretaries in the district, which was well-needed, and we will continue to do that in the future. Basically, for those of you who don't know what Incident Command, basically, it's a communication system in a way, in the event of an emergency, you know, they're going to be heading the operation, they're going to be making the decision, and basically, it's set up to help communication flow more efficiently, and it's going to end up liaison with the first responders. The second thing that we did throughout the school year, we created a district safety committee. So each building put forth two staff members. We've met two or three times now. Some of the things that we have accomplished, the first thing that we looked at was creating uniform procedures across the district, whereas in the past, you know, we had the flip chart and everything. We found, as we're going through, that some of the districts may or may not have been doing the same thing, so we've tried to create the uniform procedures throughout the district. The other thing that we've done with the district safety committee is set up reunification plan, and I think that's one area that we were really lacking. And, you know, with the reunification plan, basically, whatever building, wherever, if the need arises that the building becomes unsafe, and we're not able to return to the building, we have to get those kids back to the parents, we now have procedures in place, and it'll be the same across the district. The one problem that, or a couple problems that we're going to have with that that is starting to arise is, one, is communicating that information to the parents ahead of time, to let them know that, you know, it's going to take a little bit of time to get these plans set up and put things in place, and they need to be patient with us. So as we go forward, we'll look at how best to do that. The other issue with the reunification is with anything with the school is going to be flow of traffic, because we want to return those students, you know, efficiently, but we want to make sure that we're returning them to the correct person, and we're keeping their safety first and foremost in mind. So the flow, that means if someone is going to have to exit the car, come in, show identification, and go through the process, so we're going to have to work through some traffic issues The next thing that we worked on, once we got the committee in place and we started going into the buildings and started doing training with the different buildings regarding specifically operation, emergency operation procedures, you know, for natural disasters, we've been doing, or fire, things like that, we've been doing for a long time. There, in 2009, the Department of Homeland Security put out a memo, basically outlining the procedures that need to be used for an active shooter or violent intruder. From that, you know, things have kind of involved with school safety. Sergeant Weekly and myself attended a workshop this summer, a three-day workshop, and became certified instructors for a program called ALICE, which is an acronym. It's basically Response Options for a Violent Intruder. So besides going into the buildings and the way we started, the approach that we took, you know, we have a lot of things to do in education. You know, safety has to be first and foremost on our minds, but with everything curriculum and everything that we do, all the different hats that we wear, sometimes safety and the training with those teachers kind of gets pushed to the side. So the quickest, you know, kind of working through that, what's the quickest way that we can get teachers and staff members to understand what our responsibilities are during an emergency? And so we've kind of taken the approach, you know, and if you watch anything with Connecticut, you know, and it happens all the time, you'll get a staff member that says that flip chart goes out the window, obviously. So we've really tried to take an approach of critical thinking, you know, and understand what our priorities are during an emergency, and then with that knowledge, picking the appropriate response. You know, as a role, we're either going to evacuate, we're going to shelter in place, we're going to lock down, you know, we have a handful of options that we can use. Now it's understanding what our threat is and understanding that our number-one responsibility is to keep students safe, so what response is going to allow us to keep those students the safest? That way, you know, we don't have to rely on that flip chart. So we've made a big effort with that, with teachers as well, you know, along with that training and trying to start changing that mentality a little bit, we've got into the ALICE training. We've gone in and spent, you know, anywhere from an hour to two hours with small groups of teachers, it works best that way, and basically instructed them on the ALICE, the response options for a violent intruder. At the middle school and the high school level from there, we showed a video of the ALICE program and let those students know what their options are. You know, if we get into a situation, and I don't want to harp on the violent intruder aspect, but if we get into a situation like we did a few years back, you know, it more than likely is going to happen in a situation in passing time or whatever, those students need to understand that they have options and they have the ability to make the correct option and keep themselves safe. So at the middle school and the high school level, you know, it's a pretty advanced thought process, pretty deep material, we introduced that to them. From Lincoln on down, we just stuck with the teachers. What you need to understand probably about the ALICE program, the three response options with ALICE are lockdown, counter, and evacuate. If we can get out, we want to get out. If we can't get out, you know, there's not time, it's not safe, then we're going to lock down. With that comes some type of barricading, and we need to get into, as we go forward here, how we want to barricade those doors, and I have some options that we can talk about. Without going too much further into that, we also, from there, have gone into Jefferson, they're the first school to do it, they did a great job with it. Dolores was there, Sergeant Weekly was there, and as we go forward, we'll invite more. I know there's one whole platoon of Farmington PD that wants to come in, normally the guys that are working today, and they want more time in the building. So we're out of professional development days, and we're going to attempt to do that, and I think there are several teachers that are willing to come in and give up a Saturday, as am I. I think it's very important, and we'll try and get those police officers in as well, see what we're doing. You know, we're very unique, and Sam and I went to, maybe not unique, but it did very good, Sam and I went to the training this summer. Sam is also a certified instructor for Stratigos, so that's an active shooter response for officers. So he's got that side of it with his department as well, so we try and work as closely as we can there. We were lucky enough this summer, the ambulance district with the paramedics brought in a company called Medic Up, and it's a tactical response for paramedics, you know, and in the event that something happens, they're going in with the police officers if need be to treat the wounded. So some good opportunities there, we're going to continue to improve on and institute those Like I said, we're going to attempt to do that on Saturday. There was a couple things that I've seen in the buildings that's kind of concerned, and Dr. Thomas had talked about this. You know, as we get in and we start looking at securing doors in a lockdown situation, there are a couple easy ways to do that, but we're not set up because of the age of some of the doors and the hardware on some of the doors, we're not able to do the most easy and efficient way. So again, we'll look at that. You know, when I got over to Washington Franklin, for the first couple years, I was primarily secondary, now I'm kind of across the district, so I haven't seen a lot of those elementary buildings. You get over to Washington Franklin, and in that hallway for 1st and 2nd grade, those doors, they need help to be secure. So those, you know, we have exterior doors that don't always lock the way they're supposed to. Our communications at the high school, some of the intercom, we have issues there. So those are some of the things as we go forward that we definitely need to address. Front door, you know, you'll never be able to keep someone out 100%, but there are things that we can do as we go forward to maybe secure those a little more and maybe slow the process. Historically, you have four to eight minutes that, once something starts, you're going to have police response. So anything that we can do to delay that interest, to slow it down, is only going to help in the long run. Probably the biggest issue going forward, you know, I think that we've done a lot of good things this year and in the past, and we're going to continue to do those. Probably the biggest thing that concerns me as we go forward is making sure that we have a plan in training those teachers. You know, for a long time, it seemed like we'd get new teachers, and they were never even briefed on those basic emergency response options. So as we go forward, my hopes and what I think is going to happen is that we're going to continue to set up a rigid plan of this is when we're going to do this, this is when we're going to do this, rather than hopefully it being secondary, you know, if we have time, we'll do it here. And some of that, you know, I can take responsibility for myself, it's getting in and pushing and saying, hey, I've got to get in there. What, when can you, when can you get me into the building? But making sure that we, you know, kind of keep that schedule and making sure that all the buildings are hit.
Wait, I've got a couple things I want to add.
Yes.
All right. So some of the things that you're talking about that we need to address in our building structurally, are, we cover those in our bond issues. Those are some of the things that we're really needing to push for when we think about the bond issue.
Yes.
All of those things right there.
Yeah. And those things are in place? Okay, so, I mean, to, for the bond issue?
Yes.
Okay. The second thing is, just out of curiosity from my own interest, what's the conventional wisdom, is there a change from Columbine to Connecticut?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. When Columbine occurred, basically, police response was the old SWAT team response. So they would come in, they would set up a perimeter... So they would come in, they would set up a perimeter and basically try and negotiate. Columbine took 45 minutes once police were unseen. If you look at Virginia Tech, Virginia Tech was over in eight minutes. And basically, you know, unfortunately, the bad guys tend to evolve. They look at what happened before and then they correct those mistakes that were made. Police do the same thing. Unfortunately, they have to wait until after something else happens. If, the big thing now with police response is that you, the police are going to enter the building and they're going to go directly to the threat. In regards to school, it's a very slow process, but in 2009, like I said, Department of Homeland Security put out a memo outlining guidelines for response options for businesses, for schools, for churches. It's basically all the same. And they want us to get away from the traditional lockdown where you shut the light off, lock the door, get in the corner, and hope that they don't come in. Now they're basically giving you three options, you know, and we can go further with our notification system. It would be ideal to have camera systems set up with your intercom in a safe location where somebody can view those cameras in the event that something's going on and give out real-time information. The high school's a large building, you know, even at the elementary schools, if there's one hallway that we know is affected, there's no reason that every other hallway can't be getting out. And that's the first option. The second option then is if you're trapped there, if you can't get out, then it's not just locking the door with the lock that's there, it's finding a way to barricade that door. Unfortunately, fire codes make the, the door has to swing open, so it becomes a little more difficult. You know, you can block that with chairs, you can throw a desk in front, but unless you come up with some type of system, you know, one of the systems that we learned this summer is just taking zip ties and putting them over the end of the swing arm. And that's going to slow that progress. They're not going to, but at the high school, we have swing arms in most of the rooms. The rest of the buildings are very hit and miss as to what doors have swing arms. You know, ropes, ratchet straps, or whatever, whatever you can use to keep that door from opening. And they don't stay on there. In the event that something occurs, it goes on and slows that progress. And then, as recommended by Department of Homeland Security, you know, if somebody does enter into the room and you have no other option, there are things still yet that you can do besides just stay there. Virginia Tech was another great, a great example. You have two classrooms that were mainly affected, almost 100% casualty rate in both, and it was because of time more than anything, but also procedures. Those two classes did, really didn't do anything. The next two classes, despite procedure, at least tried to barricade the door or hold the door. Very few injuries or casualties in those rooms. Most of them were able to get out the window. Things like throwing, just whatever's next to you, movement, you know, whatever, whatever you can do to make it harder on the person if they have a gun.
So it's kind of more aggressive than it used to be?
Yeah. I mean, it can, it can be taught to be much more aggressive, but it really, you know, it's not, they're not preaching at you to attack, you know, to walk down the hall to attack somebody. It's a last, it's a last ditch. If you have no other option, you know, throw something hard, throw it at their head. You know, if you want to take it a little farther, there are defensive tactics, you know, very low-skilled defensive tactics that you can use with multiple people to try and subdue someone. We did not go that far, obviously, at the middle school or the high school level. You know, we've taught, if, you know, throw it their head, move, get away. But that's as far as we've taken it.
But still, the best thing to do is to make sure that people are informed.
Absolutely. And that's what, you know, again, this has probably taken longer than it was supposed to, but we all go through what's called an OODA loop, and you learn that a lot of times with first responders. You have to observe or receive stimulus. Your brain has to understand, you know, it's going to go through that process of understanding what that stimuli is. You have to make a decision and then you have to act. You know, on a day-to-day basis, most teachers, they don't understand what's, you know, something happens, we haven't done any training, much training, we haven't talked about it in three months. It's going to take a long time to get through that OODA loop. The more we talk about it, the more we go into the classroom, do tabletop exercises, do the live scenarios like we did over at Jefferson when we have time, you know, you're talking about very minimal distance is going to make a big difference, you know? Being able to understand that, oh yeah, that's what I thought I heard, and I get out now rather than, well, maybe it was. You know, when, when we were at the high school, you know, Matt and I were walking down the hall, and we heard it go off, and I've been around guns my whole life, and it took a little bit of a process, and I turned and I look at Matt and we're like, yeah, that's what we thought it was. But, you know, that's that OODA loop, taking longer than what it should. You know, when you're talking about hundreds of seconds or seconds in a decision-making process, possibly getting that door barricaded or getting three or four more children out the window, you know, doing the training that we're doing and as often as we can is going to help shorten that span.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, John. Okay, so we're going to move down to the librarians, right?
Right.
Okay. We have a presentation from, by Ms. Robinson and Ms. Southern. Ah, hello, ladies. Ms. Insley? And others, other librarians.
Thank you. These are cute.
Did I throw them a call?
Oh, is there one? Thank you.
Wait, no, not another. IJLN.
Well, we want to thank you for the opportunity to present the library report this year, and our report and for our school year is transformation, as you can see with your transforming bag. As you listen, that you'll hear and share our attachments for library media centers.
And the first thing that we would like you to do is to utilize a little bit of the technology that probably most of you have either in your pocket or in front of you. We've used this in some of our classes, in the schools. We would like you to think about the phrase "school libraries" and either text or type three to five words that you would associate with the phrase "school libraries." So it's a little hard to read, I'm going to try to enlarge it. The number that you send your text message to is the second message, or the second number. So this is what you would, who you would send it to. Then you type this code in, and you can type one, two, three words that you would associate with "school library." So you can do that, or from your computer, you can put this into your address at the top, put these numbers in, and submit one or two words or three words that you would associate with "school libraries." And what happens is, you can poll students this way, or you can give them multiple choices, and they will start instantly showing up. I'm going to exit out of it because we're going to save it for later. And that's something called polleverywhere.com. Do I need to leave that up there a little bit longer?
Yes.
Sorry. So the number you send to is 37607, and your answer needs to include 273213, and then you type in your words or phrases. It's a little scary to do it this way in the classroom because we won't know who's putting what response up. I'm going to say that. So usually, we give the kids four choices to choose from, and they have to text one, two, three, or four for their answer because you never know what might come up there. We're trusting you in there. Okay. Well, maybe, we want you to think about those, maybe those phrases you're kind of typing in now, and maybe think back a little bit, maybe to when you were in school and what the school library was like. And I kind of want to see if it's something like this.
Your lines work. These racks and shelves contain a lot of books, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, perhaps millions. How do you feel about them today?
Okay, those days are gone, and just like our world, our library media center is in the middle of an information and digital revolution. We want you to think about this transformation that's taking place.
In the past, libraries were focused on books.
Library media centers today are focused on the users.
In the past, libraries had silent individuals.
Now, library media centers encourage collaborative thinking.
In the past, libraries were confined to a physical space.
Now, library media centers have materials accessible via internet 24 hours a day, 7 days a week.
In the past, libraries were places to consume information.
And now, library media centers are places to evaluate, create, and share information.
In the past, libraries helped students find answers about past and present.
And now, library media centers help students prepare for the future.
As you listen to the phrases, how did it line up with your answers to the very beginning question? Let's take a look at the results.
Okay, I'm going to enlarge this. Information, fun, enjoyment, creative, challenge, a learning place. Books, fun, need updated to 21st century learners. Lifelong learner, love it. Education through literature resources, reading, learning, expanding and growing. Books, reading, fun. Fun, I love the library, yay.
As a library media specialist, we want to focus on helping our students in the 21st century classroom with 21st century books to meet our 21st century needs.
If we're going to provide the education for the 21st century learner, then partnerships are vital. The Farmington R. Southern Media Specialists are building partnerships with the IT Department directed by Mr. White, our district educational technology director, Mr. Pharoah, teachers and administrators. Recently, we were able to attend the Midwest Educational Technology Conference with Mr. White and Mr. Pharoah. We're excited to bring new creation tools to our teachers and students. Through these partnerships, we can help our students build the critical thinking skills and production abilities that they need for success in the 21st century. Here's just one recent example of student-created media.
I heard, I can't see.
Hi, I'm Mindy Southern. I'm a library media specialist for Farmington High School. We offer several different services for the students of Farmington. First and foremost, obviously, we have print books, we have fiction, nonfiction, and our reference, and we offer magazines and that sort of thing, so reading material for students. Beyond that, what we tend to do a lot of in the library is help students with technical needs in searching for information using technologies that we have. For example, we purchase databases for students to use for their research projects so that they have a reliable source to go to other than just using Google to search. The reading counts, that's another area that the library takes charge of. And we are responsible for making sure that all the tests are administered, and whether it be the SRI exam or the reading count quizzes, all of that's done in the library before school, during school, and after school.
Throughout the year, we offer different kinds of promotions and different things that we do in the library. The library has a Twitter account that you can follow, and that's available on our library webpage. You can follow us there, and we will tweet out things about new books that come in, different promotions that we're doing in the library. We also sell cappuccinos in the morning before and after school. I challenge you to say that you probably just haven't found the right book yet or it's something that interests you. So if you don't have a book that you enjoy reading, then bring it back to me today and let's find you something that you do like to read. Come see us in the library.
So that was created by a student in our Black Knight Television Program.
It's exciting to see what our students are creating in school today. Think about this, the iPad, it could be the worst technology our students will know. It'll be their Atari or film strip projector of our day. And the task of keeping up with the students of the 21st century can be a bit daunting.
Do you recognize me? Very soon, I will be your student. But I will not always sit in your classroom. I will not take out a pencil or open a textbook. You grew up with books. I read from a laptop, an iPad, a smartphone. I use a keyboard more than a pen. I'm a digital native, an active learner. Why carry just a textbook when my iPad connects me to the world? I want to know things all the time and right away. Maybe the best part's for cool shoes or where to hike the Himalayas. To learn, I look online because the classroom isn't enough for me, not when I can see faces, hear voices, and chat with people on the other side of the world. I want to learn about Chinese history from someone in Beijing. My school has to keep up with me, not the other way around. I have more and more choices. When you were my age, no one had heard of a charter school, no one could imagine a virtual school. But it's projected that by 2019, half of all high school courses will take place online. I use mobile devices to connect with friends, classmates, and teachers. And when I'm more connected, I'm more interested. I don't buy music at a store or movies or books, I get them instantly online. And when they excite me, I share with friends. That's how I want my education to be. I need a degree even more than my parents. I know it, and so do my friends. But will I be prepared? Public schools are under huge budget pressures, and traditional colleges increasingly unaffordable. I don't want crushing debt. If I can Google the best choice for cool shoes, rest assured, I'll find the best choice of education, like two-year institutions and online courses where students like me have grown to be six million strong. And when I'm older, I want to keep learning. Do you recognize me? Very soon, I will be changing the world, but I need you. If you're ready to help me, I'll find you, but it's your challenge to keep up with me. I'm a digital native, an active learner. Listen to me, help me. Together, we can create the future.
That's what we say, together we can create the future. Hopefully, you can tell that we love the digital learner, not just the tools that they use. As you can see, we're in the middle of developing new ways of thinking about library media centers. In other words, transforming the vision of the past to the hope and excitement of the future. The traditional value of reading increases in this dynamic environment. Use of technology enables Farmington students to produce, to publish, and to collaborate. In other words, to transform their lives. Library media centers are transforming into a type of learning commons, places to BYOD, which means Bring Your Own Device, and interact with people in places across the globe. We are excited about our transformation. Thank you.
And if you visit any of our libraries, what you're going to find is our librarians are so invested, and it's a wonderful place to be, every one of them. And thank you for your service. You guys do a great job. Okay, so we're going to move down to our action items. Yes. IJLN. And O.
So before you do your consensual, you want to do your discussion?
Yeah, let's do. Okay, so we've pulled the IJLN, and O, so on our discussion items, so let's do. Start with I, consideration of transportation, long-range plan. Start with I, consideration of transportation, long-range plan. Questions? Discussions?
Stacy, I think I had two kind of things I was just questioning. It looked like you had kinda had a plan to replace two buses a year. Is that gonna keep up? I mean, that's gonna still give us some pretty old buses.
Right.
I mean, but I understand we have constraints.
Right.
And the other thing was...
I felt like it was a logical thing to ask.
Oh, it's better than what we got.
And these can be updated. If we have some different kinds of resources, this is just the beginning piece, so every year it would be updated. If we're able to find some more money, we would absolutely wanna accelerate there.
That sounds good. Then, tell me a little bit about the GPS stuff, do you think? I know it was $45,000, but...
Right, and it's basically a mapping software where it would tell where the bus is, how long they'd spent at that stop, what time it got to that stop. So when it says GPS, you're thinking GPS. It's actually a mapping device that, now I highlight all my maps for my drivers and subs. It would actually print out the map because it's that route of that bus goes. So it would actually give you roads and make a right here and a left here. So it's GPS, but it's actually a software program for more than just knowing where they're at.
So my first thought was, okay, we're gonna lose buses, but that's not really what it's for. Is it gonna maybe reduce our insurance costs or anything if we can...
Actually, it's...
Know what our bus drivers are, how fast they're driving them? We're gonna know everything about...
And it's not, yeah, it's not actually to, you know, like spy on the bus drivers. It's basically, I have parents that call in and says, "That bus never came here." Well, I can actually say, "It was there at 7:05, it was there for 30 seconds, it waited, it left." I mean, and on those programs, it actually tells you, "They opened the stop arm." I mean, it tells you, "They braked, they opened the door." You know, I mean, it gives you all the specifics on there. So it's actually a tool that would help me tremendously in the long range. And most districts already do have that. It's kinda like the DVR, DVD player. They're already there. We're not there yet, but we can get there, you know?
Thanks.
I wanna throw in one other piece of that, is the prevention piece is really well-suited too. So Stacy can review, and if there's something that's not happening normally, she's able to pick that up before an accident happens or there's an unsafe situation, and use it to plan for her training for her drivers. It's almost like having a monitor on those buses to be able to look at potential problems that are there and put that training piece in place.
I mean, it would identify if the driver went down the wrong road or what have you. They're supposed to report that to me saying, "Hey, I had to veer off my route." I would know that automatically.
Stacy first looked at this, I think, in 2006?
Yes.
And guess what they were tracking with it? Concrete trucks. Now, seriously, they were trying to find out where their concrete trucks were so that if one was empty, they could be efficient and move it here, or move it there, whatever. Now, if we can monitor concrete trucks, and need to monitor concrete trucks, I think 50 kids and a bus probably need monitored too. You know what I mean? I mean, just think about that.
But those are good questions, and...
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so let's move to J, consideration of facilities, long-range plan. Questions?
Well, I do, as soon as I get my computer to work for me. All right, let me go this way. The only question I had on this was, like over at Lincoln, we've got our priorities on our facilities of 1, 2, and 3. I assume 1 is the top priority, 2 is secondary, and everything. The only thing, one of that is, the fire alarm system for Lincoln is 167,000, you know, can you tell me what that reasoning is? It's that top priority? I mean, that school's not that old, it can't be, it can't be that out of date already that would have to be overhauled, is it?
Not overhauled, no.
Doesn't function correctly.
One of the things is, it does not, it's another one of these buildings that does not hook up to the fire system. You know, what I mean is, if fire alarm is pulled, nobody knows about it unless somebody makes a call. You know, we don't have, we have smoke alarms, but we don't have them in every room and, you know, where they need to be. We could have, I mean, this is just one example, I mean, this is, most of the buildings are that way, that we need upgrades.
So is this something to tie in with the fire department, police department, and everything? Okay, I was just kinda wondering about that.
It's essentially a new system because most of our buildings, until the fire goes up the roof, there's no way of knowing if nobody's in the building. And depending upon how the wiring situation was set up for communication, that particular building needed, needs a new system in place to be able to do that. To be able to have things monitored for smoke, for fire, for all the rest of that piece.
Okay, you know, I was just kinda wondering, you know, that, on that. The other was, of course, I've harped on the roofs of I and everything. I added on all of our roof needs and everything, and adding them up, that in September, you sent me an email, and it was 2.8 million, but that didn't include home base and administration like we're including now. But adding them all up with all the priorities and all this and that, it comes to 2.7 million with the other two buildings and everything. And if you add with them what you've sent me, it's almost 3.2. So I'm kinda wondering how we're getting our figures and everything, if I'm, you know, getting the information from one, you know, if we, you know, making sure that we're getting, you know, what we really need and that, you know, I mean, there's kinda...
The one thing that's happening is, the longer we wait, the worse the roof get.
Right, exactly. And I'm going by what you've got, but it's less what you've sent me, or what was sent here than what I was sent last September. So I would've thought that your figures should've been higher, at least, because I know we're, the longer we're waiting, the more it's costing and everything, you know, and...
I went with the last estimates that we had, I didn't, they're not updated to today's figures, but that's probably why.
Okay, okay. I mean, you know, when we're asking for, either we go with the bond issue or a lease and everything, you know?
This is just supposed to be a guideline, give us an idea of where we wanna go and what, you know, we need priority on the roofs. When we get to the point where we can start really looking at the roofs, we need to, that's when we can get some bids and get some figures.
Each of these dollar figures have square feet to go along with them. We reported it in dollar figures at the time instead of the number of square feet.
Okay.
So when you asked at the beginning of the year, at that point, that included some things that were on priority 1 and were on priority 2 before because of the condition of the roofs at that point in time. So I think what would probably be more useful in the future is to go back to the square footage, but we thought it was more meaningful to give you a general dollar figure to equate with that. And at the point at which you go back for your bond issue, then you would need to get your new square footage cost in terms of that.
Okay. I think that was really the only two that I had really questions on that.
Anyone else? Okay, looking at L, approval, technology bids for desktop laptops and monitors. Several people had questions about that. Any discussion?
I guess my question, I'm not real technic. Are the machines comparable? I mean, I read over it, but, I mean, are they all the same? Are they, I know one of them's maybe a year newer than the other, so they're refurbished machines?
Yeah, for both, for both of those machines are refurbished. The CDI was, a lot of machines, the machines are mostly a year or two years newer, and they're all the same models, which we have, will have the same model when we order. We'll all come in, we'll be able to utilize the same model across the whole school district. And with Midcom, they're a year or two older, and they would not get the same model, but they might get two or three different models of laptops.
Okay, so we have some of these machines already in the district?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know what a hot swap unit is.
Basically, like if a hard drive goes down, we have one there, swap it with without having any wait time.
Okay.
Anyone else?
If you add up the figures, which I, pardon my ignorance, but I've looked through this thing, looked through this thing, is there a total FAR, Midcom, and a total FAR...
Yes.
CDI? Where is that?
It was in your update, it's not on this, just so you know.
It's not in this package?
It was in the update that I sent you as an attachment. He can give it to you, but that's where those comparisons were, just so you know. And I can explain why, but that's, he can give you the totals now, but that's where that sheet was.
My best guess, from the information you gave me, was that, correct me if I'm wrong, I have CDI for 165,660 dollars.
That sounds right.
I mean, that's adding together 73,670 dollars for desktops, and 73,630 dollars for laptops, and monitors, 18,360. And then, if I go to Midcom, I've got 77,645 for desktops, 71,780 for laptops, and monitors, 13,260.
That's correct.
For a total of 162,685 dollars.
Right.
So we're looking at a difference of...
About 3,000, 3,000 dollar difference.
Right, almost exactly 3,000 dollars, within 15 dollars, it'll be 3,000 dollars. And your recommendation is CDI?
That's correct.
Over the lower price?
Yes.
Explain.
Well, CDI, like Laura's was asking, their computer specs were better, newer. Machines will have one platform for desktops, so it'll be all the same when we come in, and there are newer machines, and they're refurbished there, whereas, so they go through and they certify their, test all their equipment, and have CDI. And Midcom's, they buy theirs off lease, I'm assuming, and depending on what they do there, they may or may not test or go through and make sure all the parts are working on or...
But we have the same guarantee from both companies?
No, the guarantee from CDI is five years replacement, and Midcom's four-year replacement.
And what did we write in our specs we wanted?
Four years.
Besides that, what's the difference in why we would choose?
The specifications of machines, I mean, we...
Besides that?
I mean, as, from a technology standpoint, specifications are some of the most important aspects, so that's what we look at.
Right, but as a board, we sit here, and I'll speak for myself, I sit here, weighing that low bid, local company, living in town, going to bid in this community...
Sure.
...as opposed to a company from out of the community, the next time we try to pass a bond issue, CDI is not gonna vote.
Sure.
I mean, that's just, so I just need to make sure that what you're telling me, the inconvenience is worth all of the negative that's gonna come out of not hiring a local company who has bid a little bit. So that's why I'm asking you to throw everything out on the table that's different, that we should choose that company over the local company.
And CDI has, has...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, CDI has the reputation of doing large schools and making large orders. Midcom will tell you that they have not made an order this large before, so not knowing if they can service their requests is also, you know, something to weigh in there as well.
I envision signing a contract with them?
Yeah.
And expecting in the contract those expectancies, and if those can't be met, then I'm assuming that can be breached. I mean, put the language in, but...
Yes, part of the RFP process.
So, on all our specs, Midcom, they met our specifications, what we wrote?
They met the minimum requirements, yes.
And that, and then CDI just went a little bit...
Yes, they went a little farther.
Farther and everything. But it's only 3,000 dollars, give or take a few hundred dollars.
And mostly that difference is in the monitors, which doesn't serve as much purpose as the desktops and laptops do.
Well, I understand that, but dealing with...
Sure.
...other companies too, the way I deal with, I know that if I'm, if I'm wanting to get my foot in the door, I'm gonna put a little bit more, but we set out specs, if we wanted, if we wanted a little bit more, we should've specced it, you know, higher than, you know, what we want. So if Midcom met our specifications, you know, then I'm kinda leaning toward a local company myself and everything, you know? I mean, they met what we specced out in that, then, you know, than the other company, yeah, they went a little bit more, but, you know, like I said, what happens next year when we're gonna order another big, you know, bunch of computers next year, and they drop back to what our specifications are, but then, you know, we come back and say, "Well, you know, let's go with this," but we, you know, we've got CDI out there, but, you know, why do we wanna change, you know, once we go with it, you know? So that's kinda...
I think the one thing I wanna point out, and we can go anywhere that we need to go, but the computers we've been buying for the past year, the specs are the same as what we're recommending. If we go with the other vendor, we're going to be putting computers in that are not as good as what we've been buying this year. And one of the things that we're trying to do is we're trying to get as upgraded and as technologically advanced computers in the hands of our kids, as you could see. This contract is for one year. Each year, we're going to buy more. But right now, regardless of where the vendors are from, the recommendation we have is to put the best product in our students' hands that will allow our teachers to have the best that we can with what you guys asked, which was to purchase as opposed to lease. So if we go with a year older and a little less on the technical area, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna put in a year's worth of computers that are less than what we've been putting in this year.
Okay, Dr. Thomas, I agree, I agree with what you're saying, but then, why didn't we upgrade our specs?
But we have a couple of other issues with it. I think that the recommendations are there. And again, we can do, we can file whatever the board wants, but I do think that you need to understand that what we wanted to bring you was what we thought was the best we could provide for our students. That was really where our focus was, the best equipment and machinery we could provide for our students. When we put the RFP out there, these are obviously refurbished computers from everybody. We didn't know what was gonna be out on the market and available. So we need to put something in our students' hands because we need to get ready. I just wanna remind you that we'll be coming back each year for another third of those computers, and one of the areas that we need to try to do is we need to try to get the newest, most updated equipment in our students' hands because they're gonna be using them for the next four years. And next year, we'll set those specs up again. But on that superficial level, the second vendor that we did not recommend, we would be purchasing less for our kids than what we have right now. We're already buying used equipment for them. So we're trying to keep... So, we're trying to keep their capacity up as much as possible. And we'll go with whatever, because we've gotta move somewhere. We've gotta get onward with it. But one of the concerns that we faced in the past was putting software that had already kind of been passed, and we're making a decision to buy used computers because of the finances. We want to recommend to you what we think is the best product for the kids. Your concerns may be different than that, but that's where we're coming from in terms of, what do we think is the best product we can give the kids right now?
And each of these computers that we're gonna purchase, whether we purchase them from one company or either, are gonna go into the classrooms.
That's correct.
And they're gonna be a light year ahead of what they replace.
They're definitely better. In most cases, they're going to replace something that's not there anymore because it's not, its function doesn't work.
Right. So, what I'm saying is, they met the specs, both companies met the specs that we asked for, and when we put these in the classroom, it's gonna be-
Still not gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be better.
Extremely better than what they have right now.
Okay.
But it's not the best.
It's not the best.
I understand, I understand.
In fact, their phones are probably better, their smartphones are better than most computers out there these days.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's move on to approval of trailer purchase. Any questions about that, any discussion?
Question I had on it is, it was trailer, extra trailer, this, the extra trailer to haul, if I remember right, the power washer and all this and that, you know? Alls I'm wondering is that we've got used equipment setting around, you know, and that is, instead of taking district money now, why can't we get rid of some of this stuff? I mean, that, the dump truck, when's the last time it was used, you know? Can we sell some of that stuff to buy, instead of buying a, you know, a used trailer, why not buy a new one, something that can be used, I don't know, for the skid load or something else, you know? You know, get something, a good one, and that.
Well, first question about the dump truck, it was used two weeks ago. The trailer we want to get is a small one, just a tiny, I mean, it's a small utility trailer. I mentioned specifically that it's a large shore router. It's too heavy for two people to lift into the back of the truck. So, it means going and getting one of our big trailers, we've got a twelve-foot and a sixteen-foot trailer, you know, it's just inconvenient. And those trailers are tied up a lot of times anyway, but one person could get the little trailer, move the, you know, that smaller equipment more efficiently is what I'm looking at.
The other thing, Jeff, about the sale of that, Dr. Thomas has to deem equipment that is no longer used in the district, and we'd have to prove a surplus sale.
Oh, I know, I know, I understand that, and, you know, I'm just, you know, instead of buying a used trailer, you know, why not get a, get a new one, you know, that's something that's gonna-
Well, we don't, we don't need a fancy trailer or anything, we just need one to move equipment. It's not, I mean, as much as it's gonna be on the road, we don't need the best and the most, you know, a brand-new one.
Well, that, what I'm saying, you know, I guess this trailer is, got good tires on it, I mean, the, we don't have to worry about the bearings and stuff like that, that is not gonna, you know, we use it next week, that the bearings go out or something, you know? That's, you know?
Yeah, it's in good shape, it's beautiful.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions, my favorite? Okay, approval of maintenance software purchase, item O. Questions, discussion?
Of course, I get it.
I'm totally confused. I don't understand what it, I tried reading over this little sheet, and I kinda need, just give me a brief update of what it does and what you're gonna use it for, and, because I don't understand.
Okay. Basically, we've got a work order program in place now, but it's a basic program. This is light years ahead of what we've got. It will let us do, take care of what we do now with work orders, but it'll also let us put in preventive maintenance items that will automatically keep those on schedule and generate work orders. It will let us do inventories of the equipment, including model numbers, warranties, put in pictures and diagrams, and, you know, if we go up to a rooftop unit, we can pull that up on our phone and see what's been down there, you know? We can track repairs on it, we can look at, say, "This rooftop unit, we put in a compressor in it, you know, two years ago, and now all this other is wrong, you know, it's time to look at replacing this." Not just that kind of equipment though, but we can keep inventories of desks, chairs, whatever.
That sounds a little bit better than just looking at the sheet, sorry.
It's hard to look at that and know what's- The one I'm recommending too, it's, a lot, well, all of those on that sheet are very compatible as far as, you know, what they do, but the one, it actually is a lower price, but it has some features on there that the others don't include in their basic packages, so.
Okay, so, I'm going to need a motion to approve items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, K, M, P, and Q.
I moved to approve all items except-
Okay.
I, J, L, N, and O.
That'll work too, I like that.
That's the last letter.
I like it, okay? Bingo. All right. Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, now, voting on item I, approval of transportation long-range plan. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay. J., approval of facilities long-range plan.
I make a, make that motion.
Thank you, Janet. I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, 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 I got a brain freeze.
Okay. All right, moved in second, and all those in favor? Okay. Approval of technology bids for desktop, laptop, and monitor.
So moved.
Moved, do you want to hear a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second, and all those in favor? Okay?
Okay, so we're-
All those opposed?
We got that. Can we have another motion? We need to buy something.
I'll make a motion that we approve the low-dollar figure, which is from Midcom.
Do you hear a second?
I'll second that.
Laptops, monitors.
Desktops?
Desktops.
Okay. Okay, moved in second, and all those in favor? Okay. All those opposed? All right. Approval of trailer purchase. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
That's right.
Moved in second, and all those in favor of the trailer purchase? In opposition? Okay, and approval of maintenance software purchase?
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, okay. All those in favor? Okay, and now we're down to, I need a-
I'm moving, we go into executive session, okay?
I'm really good with that, can you give me some numbers?
Yeah, we're gonna discuss person up to six, ten, point oh-two-one, there goes one, three, and thirteen.
Okay, I need a second?
I'll second that.
Anna Roll call.
Han?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Yes.